Father, first of all, Lord, we do wanna, we just wanna be thankful this week, Lord God. We got a lot to, to thank you for, Lord, and we wanna thank you for our many blessings. We wanna thank you for our family, thank you for our friends. Father, we just, we just thank you for the veterans. We thank you for our law enforcement officers, Lord, and thank you for our, our military, Lord. We thank you, we thank you, Father, for the leaders of the United States of America. We thank you for our local leaders, Lord God, and, Father, we just thank you, Lord God, for this community. We thank you, Lord, for, oh, God, this, this board, and, Father, as we get ready to break bread and give thanks, Father, we just wanna be thankful for everything that you have blessed us with. Father, continue to bless this community, bless the United States of America, bless this board, Father. We give you praise, glory, and honors, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, take this opportunity to welcome everyone to the, uh, to the board meeting, November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Just wanna remind everybody, if you would like to come before the board at the end of the meeting, uh, we have a time set aside. Just need to fill out the form located behind, Mr. Paul and Mr. Whitfield, right there. Uh, remember, you have three minutes as an individual and five minutes as, as if you're representing a, a group. And please remember, if you come before the board, just make sure you state your name, address for the record, please. If you can, also silence your cell phones, uh, while we doing, conducting, uh, the business of, the business of the, uh, of the community of the board. Uh, at this time, we'll move right into the consent agenda. The consent agenda, this is where one vote cuff, covers a mul- multiple items. Uh, is there anyone in the audience with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Questions or concerns with the consent agenda? If there being none, is there anyone on the staff with any questions or concerns with this consent agenda? None, all right, any board members with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Board members, all right? If there being none, I entertain a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any, uh, further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh. All right, moving right on along. County staff business. Mr. Hammond, you going first, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Unfortunately, we're two days late on the meeting this year. We don't get to see Commissioner Rogers. Happy birthday, he's two days away, but, uh, so we'll dispense with that. We have Commissioner Gene Bailey from Calhoun County wants to, to speak to us this morning about something, if, if we could go to him.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey, you come on up, state your name, and you represent for the record, please, sir.
Thank y'all for, uh, being here this morning. Uh, I had talked with, uh, Michael earlier, and right now, our building inspector, uh, is, uh, out sick and it's something or other, we only have one, and, uh, we had discussed this, and, uh, I was looking to see if we might, in our, in our local agreements, I think as the counties work together to help one another, especially, you know, after the hurricane, even before though, and as we move forward in economic development and all, uh, I want you to know that, uh, we want to help Gov. County all we can. I mean, you know, if we support the deep water port, anything economically, but y'all down here helps us in Calhoun County because, you know, we're strapped, we're physically strapped money-wise, but so I was looking to see if we might work out an interlocal agreement where when we have problems and need building inspections or something or other, that, uh, we could use your building department as, uh, uh, to help us, and, and likewise, you know, we might help y'all with that, will probably be very seldom, but, uh, y'all father staff than we are, and, uh, right now, we're looking for some immediate help because all of a sudden, he got sick, and we only have one person, and he's a building official and the inspector too. And so I had mentioned to Michael, and Michael told me to come down here and address his board, and, you know, to see, uh, discussion, to see what we might get us in a local agreement so y'all could help us and assist somehow in, uh, our building department.
Okay, all right, um, Mr. Bailey, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Gene Bailey. I'm vice chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Calhoun County.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, board members, any questions, or Mr. Bailey, or Mr. Hammond?
I, I'm in support, uh, since it's gonna be my license on the line, we just wanna hold harmless. Uh, we, we have done this, I wanna say about fifteen or twenty years ago, we did it for Franklin County, and it worked fine, and they gave us a hold harmless. Calhoun's our, I guess, mother or father county, I don't know which one, we, we got cut off from y'all a long time ago.
Actually, we, we, we are both, we are the mother. This used to be Calhoun County.
If, if, if they will indemnify me and the board, then, then I would certainly support this, uh, helping them out, and, and, uh, some of our folks will, will help cover for them. I th- I think he was already gonna retire around, back after the first of the year.
He's retiring in December too, I mean, at the end of December, we don't know where he was gonna come back the next four weeks or not, you know, but some help, and, and we are advertising, we gotta advertise it out there, and, you know, to fill the position. But if we had this interlocal, then it would help, you know, at times in the future, or...
So, so if we could get the county attorney to draft an, uh, interlocal and get permission for the chairman to sign that, uh, that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, all right, board members.
So move, Mr. Chairman, make a motion?
Yeah, make the motion, all right. Motion by Commissioner Rich.
We support our Calhoun County.
All right.
Our interlocal. Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any, uh, further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
I appreciate that, and like I say, anything that we can do as part of interlocal or passing resolutions together from county to county to, uh, you know, enhance our economic development program and all, even to the forelanding of, you know, the Highway seventy-one all the way up to I-ten, you know, for your deep water port or anything, if, the more we work together, the better off, and it seem like we work together better with Gov. County than, uh, you know, we do some of the other counties, helping out a lot more in common.
Yes, we appreciate it.
I think we got a good football team, uh...
Y'all gonna, y'all gonna quit beating us up, Mr. James.
You shouldn't have brought that up.
But I appreciate it, I sure do.
Yes, sir.
You know, so, from the time I played down here, back when I was, many years ago.
Yes, sir, appreciate it, yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, sir.
Kerry handed your old packet, it's slightly long today, but before we get started, something I forgot yesterday, I can't remember everything. Something that came up at our small county coalition meeting, uh, last week, uh, supporting the pay raise for Department Corrections. It, we're at a crisis level, we're, we're way, way short on our folks, it's gonna impede us getting the annex open timely, but if we could do a resolution, and hopefully Calhoun County could do a resolution as well to, to, for the governor and, and to the small county NFAC to make it a priority to, to give DOC a significant raise this year, if we could get that.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any, uh, further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public on Senator Resolution for DOC employees? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
One thing that was brought up in that meeting is, not only is it the largest employer in Gov. County, most of small counties, including Calhoun and Liberty and Waukulla and, and many others, Baker and Union. It's Franklin, it's, it's the largest employer in most of the small counties, so it's, it's extremely important that, uh, uh, that they stop being ignored like they have for the last ten years, pretty much, without the pay raise and whatnot, and, and that's one of the reasons they can't keep folks. So, uh, page one through four, this is in response to the letter from the city of Port St. Joe, and again, we're just gonna have to agree...
What you want, Mike?
Uh, in your packet Kerry gave you, it should look like this here.
You talking about that? Oh, that one, okay.
The city had sent a, a...
Hold on, one second, Mr. Rich. Look like that, Mr. Rich. It looked like that.
Yes. Too much blood there, Sam.
That's it, that's it.
Now we got it.
All right, go ahead.
Um, this is in response to the letter from the city, and, and this has been going back and forth for, I guess, probably close to two years. The last I heard, we had a deal, uh, what was discussed in the last city commission meeting, or actually the city commission before last, last month, uh, was nothing that we've been discussing for the last nine months. Uh, this plan, that, that what we call pot three money started eight years ago, this, this is a plan that has been set basically for the last four years, the money's finally flowing, uh, the city of Port St. Joe in the first four years of this plan is getting two point four million. The only request that the county had in the first four-year period is five hundred thousand, and it was to take that plant offline at Guff Air. The original plan had it to, to assist the city in purchasing that plant, the city decided they did not wanna purchase that plant, and the county has no opinion of that. Our deal was to get that stinky, leaky plant offline that has been a problem and a thorn in our side since the, the eighties. So, our discussions with the city over the last nine months has been to pay all the costs, lift station, piping, whatnot, to retire that plant, and for them to only take the affluent, like they do at, uh, Barrier Dunes and Sea Cliffs and other places, they're just taking the, the wastewater, which they need, uh, on that line, and, and now they, you know, requesting to transfer that money. So, based on, on this, I'm recommending you deny that request, and that we do the, offer the same, uh, deal that we offered to the city of Port St. Joe to, to Mexico Beach, to take that affluent. That is a, uh, that is a very bad thing for the environment, goes right in the bay when it leaches into that soil, and it's extremely bad for the neighbors. And, uh, we need to move forward with that, it was our top priority, it was our only priority in the first five years, and that's my recommendation.
Okay, all right, so let's, uh, let's kinda explain this, since, so why, why we want, we wanna deny this? Basically, could that five hundred thousand be used for what they requesting it for?
Well, you gotta jump through some hoops. One, you would have to approve it, then we would have to a- approach the consortium, which, uh, commit, uh, former Commissioner Yeager, Administrator Yeager is, is the chairman of, and then it has to be approved by the council. The problem is, this has been set in stone for four years, it's been in process for eight years, it's way too late down the, down the railroad tracks to, to change, but also, if you look, what they're, what they're talking about doing, the entire intent of this money is to, to make three or four to one for every dollar you put in. And unfortunately, for, for some folks, it's, it's just a straight, you need a five hundred thousand dollar project, I want five hundred thousand dollars. No, you're supposed to put up a million five to get to five, and, and, and do it that way. But if you look on page three of your packet, it's got the breakdown of where all the twelve point three million's gonna be spent over the, you know, twelve point, twelve point, twelve point eight. If you look in the first trots there, the city of Port St. Joe's getting a million nine, and then an additional five hundred, so it, in the first five years, we're already a year into it, they're getting two point four million dollars out of the money. We asked for five hundred, they're getting two point four. So North Port St. Joe sewer upgrades, and is getting two point four million in this first five-year deal. They got a hundred thousand for study money the first year, and, uh, design permitting two hundred thousand, and then construction of a million seven, and then an additional five hundred. So, they're still getting a tremendous amount of money, you know, five times that number, basically, but our number one priority was to get that plant offline, and, uh, I would not recommend that we change course, and, and again, they're getting the lion's share. Now, the city of Weewahichka's also getting money, but it's later on down because they're trying to get matching funds for their portion of this pot. But I won't say it's an act of Congress to change it, but it is an aggravation to change it, and a long process, and I, it's cer- certainly not something to be in the county's best interest.
Right, I agree, okay. I think, like you say, we just need to, just reach out to them, and, I mean, we need to let them know, hey, cause we, I mean, I'm pretty sure, uh, Mr. Yeager, we did request money for, to put in, uh, to fix that sewer issue in North Port St. Joe.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, ask a question. I thought, Michael, I thought we had a, had it worked out where they were gonna take that affluent, regardless of what, what happened.
I thought we did too.
I mean, that, it just looks like to me that would be advantageous to them to do that, I, I can't understand.
It's, it's, well, one, I think it's advantageous for them to pick up those three hundred-plus customers at, at, at the sewer bill that I pay, number one, but, but forget that, when, when you have absolutely no cost, the county's paying for the lift station, for all the expense to tie that in, and all they're doing, sending them a bill, one bill, not three hundred individual bills, we're talking about the, the owner of that system, which would remain, whatever the name of that Guff Air sewer system is now, would be paying the city of Port St. Joe, the same exact deal that Barrier Dunes and Sea Cliffs did when they took that bad plant offline, uh, that, again, that's just a few hundred feet from the water.
Are they not wanting the, wha- what's their latest? I, I can't understand why they're not wanting to take that affluent, and...
I, I have absolutely no understanding on this particular issue, no, sir, I can't give you that.
I mean, last, last meeting, you know, we discussed it, I thought we had it understood, they were gonna, we'd worked out a deal where they were gonna take it, and, and, uh...
If Mr. Smallwood's got any information on that, I'd be glad to... No, I, 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 other than, than being contrary, I, I, I know of absolutely no way that they could lose, absolutely no way they can lose, we're spending, we're spending all the money, and all they're doing, sending a bill for the affluent, which they need. Uh, I, but, but again, take it one step further, we're, we're doing the RV, FEMA RV lot in Beacon Hill Park, have the opportunity to pick up several hundred thousand dollars in TAPs fees, they're putting in the lift station, they're running the lines, and the city refused to do that too, Mexico Beach did that. So, again, I, I do not understand that at all, but I'm, certainly don't believe that we need to kill our project to, to, to move it to, to another project for the city.
I'm like the chairman, I wish we'd reach out to them and say, you know, what's going on, cause it looks like to me they need those customers, and, and, uh, they got affluent, you know, I mean, they've got the capacity, plenty of capacity, and, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would think, I mean, take the five hundred thousand, use it where, where it needs to be used, like you said, towards what we purpose, I mean, purposes for, and then you gonna, like I say, we got money in here that we, um, Mr. Yeager, I know you were gonna speak on it a little bit, but, but we requested to help, uh, to take, uh, to redo that, the sewer in, in North Port St. Joe, I mean, they're gonna have two times that money to do what they need to be done.
Right, and, and I think all this, uh, they asked me to, the, the mayor sent me a text and wanted me to come and meet with, uh, them and the, the, uh, city manager and, and talk about, and I can't remember, Clay, were, were you in that meeting? And, and to just talk about that project, and, and talk about changing that project, and I told them the procedures for that, and it's a little bit of a arduous procedure, number one, they've gotta get y'all's blessing, and then you have to present, uh, the change, uh, so you'll have to, Clay, or somebody would have to write up that change, you'd have to go before the consortium board, which we meet about four times a year, and, and then it would have, be advertised for forty-five days, and then it would have to go to the council for approval of the amendment. So I just told them that process, and told them how to start that process, uh, I think the discussion that I had with them on the, um, taking the affluent was that they had done a study, and for, somehow the study stated that it just, that, it didn't work, the numbers did not work for that, so, um, they still have money in here for the project, uh, in North Port St. Joe, that phase one, and, uh, I, I think it's up to y'all to, uh, have that discussion with them. Uh, I, I, I think all of us have, have done our dead-level best to try to work with both cities with this money, matter of fact, um, in, in looking at what Michael has presented to you, um, for, for, between the city of Port St. Joe, they're, they're getting about five million of that twelve, the city of Weewahichka is getting a couple million, and then, um, there's some erosion control project in here that y'all have, and, and one other project, so, um, I think both the cities are getting substantial amount of that pot three money, and that, that pot three is just like your pot one, it comes over a period of fifteen years, so it's, it's, it's spread out, but it just so happens that, uh, the, the city of Port St. Joe's getting most of their, or, or a lot of their money, uh, before any of the rest of the folks, but there is a process to it, it's just up to y'all to h- how you proceed with that.
How many, uh, customers, so they're not taking any of those customers, that new subdivision, the...
They're all going to Mexico Beach.
The Beacon Hills and all that's going to Mexico Beach?
Well, I, I'm gonna talk about that in my next deal, but, but cur- currently...
How many customers would you say is, I, I just came for the life, maybe I understand...
I'm gonna estimate that they've got a hundred and fifty customers in rough terms on, uh, some approved and some, some unapproved, some people, which, we're, the entire effort for the county on sewer for the last twenty years, since Allen Bents was the speaker of the house, was to get all the septic tanks off of St. Joe Beach, uh, Beacon Hill, all the way to the county line off, I mean, that was the plan. The Cape was a private sewer system that turned in, you know, they gave it to the city and Ashbrit run it, but, but our focus has been on getting Highland View, what is now Windmark, before it was Windmark, St. Joe Beach and Beacon Hill off of that, uh, system, cause it runs right in the bay, and it's, you know, it's a problem. But for, for the life of me, I do not understand, we've got a dry line that's big enough to handle everything that's gonna build out in that, in that, in the future. You've got dozens, if not hundreds, of septic tanks that were destroyed by the storm, that cannot hook up the sewer today because of, you know, won't make it available, and, uh, some individuals, without county permission, although I'm certainly not gonna object, have hooked up to that, uh, Mexico Beach line that runs into Gov. County, right next to a big trunk line that runs to the city that's dry. So, between the, what I call the Jerry Care subdivision, up behind Beacon Hill Park, all of those houses is pretty much filled up, and, and then that assisted living facility and whatever, whatnot, and then quite a number of people, uh, on Highway ninety-eight that have, that have built and have tied into that line, plus the RV park, and they, they had fifty-something slots, but there's, I, I don't know how many's in there now, probably a dozen or fifteen, but, but they put in the slots for that, and all of those are going to Mexico Beach.
All right, board members.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I, Mr. Hammond, you say you, uh, do not recommend this?
That's correct.
All right, okay, and I think you've explained it, and I'm, I'm just like Commissioner Macron, to, I can't believe they wanna turn down money that'll go on to now. I don't understand, and maybe they know something we don't know, but anyway, Mr. Chairman, is a motion in order?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, I make a motion, we deny.
All right, mo- I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any, uh, further board discussion?
If we could, Mr. Chairman, put in that motion that, to reach out to the city, let's, let's...
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, to...
Yeah.
If we had to get a workshop or something with them, we got some issues going on now, I'd, I'd be, you know, so...
Yes, yeah, I agree, let's reach out, reach out to them, and, uh, you know, five hundred thousand or, you know, the two point some million, I think I'll take the two point some million and, I mean, redo that. Yeah, redo that project. So we'll, we'll include that in the motion, all right? Uh, any, any further board discussion?
Yes.
All right, any, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Next page. If that wasn't good enough, this oughta...
Really do it.
Nice, okay. I want you to, starts on page five with my recommendation, which I don't know if they'll wanna have a workshop with us after that or not, maybe they will. I want you to look at page six. We're in the process of, of doing, I don't know how many, forty, fifty, sixty low-income trailers, uh, we're in the process of doing HHRP for moderate and, and for low, and I want you to look at the sewer tap. We had a, we had a applicant that qualified for this program, and they already had a water tap, and that was a little bit of an issue, this was in White City, and to hook up sewer to that property without the plumber and without the electrician was just a hair shy of ten thousand dollars. So I wanna, I want to break down what our areas around us are charging for water and sewer, and what the city of Port St. Joe's charging, and, and this is, this is a nightmare that we've heard, it doesn't affect anybody that's not building anything new, but it's gonna affect the Baptist church when they get ready to build. Uh, I remember when Mary Lou's church, it started out, they wanted eighty-eight thousand, I don't know what they wound up settling for, but I think it was forty-four thousand, it oughta be criminal. We can't get a dry cleaners in town, that'll be a hundred-plus thousand tipping fee. We had a, a business that built in Highland View that the tap fee for the water and sewer was greater than the metal building cost for that building. Uh, it, it is, it is an impediment for economic development, it is an impediment for anybody who wants to start a family, we're not talking about, you don't have to be rich to not be able to afford the ten thousand dollars. City of Weewah, two hundred dollars for water, three hundred dollars for sewer, they have to have a bore, it's five hundred dollars. So the worst-case scenario for you in the city of Weewah is a thousand dollars. Water tap fee in the city of St. Joe, three thousand forty-three dollars, sewer tap fee, six thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, plus, 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 you get a bore, you get more, you get grinder, you, all these things on top of that. Bay County, water tap fee, a thousand five dollars, sewer tap, twenty-three hundred and twelve dollars fifty cents. City of Bluntstown, water tap, five hundred dollars, twenty-dollar deposit, sewer tap fee, fifteen hundred dollars. We are four to ten times higher in the city of Port St. Joe that is running all of your unincorporated area than just about everybody around us, and that ain't talking about the fee for the water that's not fit to drink and, and, and for the sewer. I mean, when, when, when single-family folks that we got signed up, when it was gonna be water and sewer was forty-five dollar, now the minimum bill's well over a hundred, that, that's a crisis for folks that are struggling. So, I'm gonna recommend to you on page five, that we get Dooberry to, to present us a proposal, cause I don't wanna spend any money before we figure out what it's gonna call, to do a feasibility study for water and sewer on the south end, and for water on the north end, in the, probably in Stone Mill Creek area, uh, for aquifer water, for water you can drink, for water that's affordable, we can provide a good product at a good price, and, and my recommendation, if this goes through, would be that we look at taking our unincorporated area back over, we can service our own. Uh, I've heard the complaints, we've been on this, this, uh, whatever you wanna call it, Boondoggle Water Plant from, from surface water since two thousand and seven, uh, my water's still red, my pipes are still getting heated up, it's outrageously expensive, the filters that they're buying from Siemens are still a hundred thousand dollars a piece, uh, there's no movement whatsoever to fix that. What I'm looking at is this, just about all the systems in the county are new, or fairly new, there's no terracotta pipe in the county, there's no cast iron pipe in the county's systems, they've got fifty or sixty million dollars' worth of repairs they need to do in city of Port St. Joe. Uh, the fallacy of that sixteen million dollar bond was that most of that was spent on annexation and, and whatnot, fallacy. The biggest single project in that sixteen million dollar bond was what they called Basin Seven, from Palm Boulevard to Highway ninety-eight, and it was a four-plus million dollar project of that, so a quarter of it for that one thing. Then you spend a hundred thousand upgrading here, and a million upgrading there, and the pipe from the water plant and upgrade, and, uh, Highland View Sewer didn't cost a penny, we had a two million dollar grant, they paid a hundred percent for that. Cape, or, uh, Beach's sewer, I think they put a million five of that sixteen million in that. They paid nearly a million dollars for a lift station at Windmark Offsite that they were gonna have to do, for Windmark, they'd already paid those tipping fees, so we get blamed, the county gets blamed for, for a lot of these costs that are not our responsibility, and I don't see it getting better, in fact, I see it getting worse, and we can't, our folks cannot afford that. The average person in White City, Highland View, Overstreet cannot afford the water and sewer bill that we're getting today, and it's just went up, it just went up another, what, four percent? Businesses can't move here and pay those type of tipping fees, churches can't rebuild and pay those type of tipping fees, and, uh, I, I just think we need to say enough's enough, I would love for them to come to the senses and us come to an agreement and say, all right, we'll, we'll go back, we'll get on the aquifer, uh, I'm not concerned about South Florida's stuff, I'm worried about our stuff. The sad thing is, we used to have the best water in the state of Florida, and we got some of the worst water in the state of Florida today, and there's no desire whatsoever to change any of that, other than just socking it to anybody that comes in, wants to build about, build, buy a building permit and, and buy a tap fee. So, I'd say let's see where we're at, uh, on the north end, I know in the Stone Mill Creek area, I think we could pick up the prison as well, but, uh, they need fire protection. Uh, I remember when we got water in ninety-three, ninety-four in White City, my water bill was fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents for two thousand gallons, it's a far cry from today, but my yearly water bill was paid for by the insurance that I'd saved on my house insurance, saved eight hundred dollars a year on the house insurance, so it would benefit the north end of the county to, to look at running water, and it would benefit the south end of the county, and we'll have to figure out how we unwind the, the... So we need to look going forward, we've, you know, we're talking last week at our conference about a ten-year plan, a twenty-year plan. Ten-year plan for us on water and sewer does not look good unless we do something to, to change the trajectory.
All right.
Chairman, go ahead.
Thank you.
Most of you know I live in the north end of the county, but I don't, honestly, the average working people, I don't know what the average salary is here in Guff County for a family, I know it's not a six figures, I'll promise you that. But three thousand dollars to hook up the water, when you can go to Weewall, Hitchcock and get it hooked up to two hundred. We got good water up there, we in the Florida aquifer up there, we've got great water. Tap fee for sewer, three hundred dollars versus six thousand eight hundred in the same can I'm, do, let me ask, Mr. Chairman, if I could, let me ask Mr. Hammond here. Does municipality, does it fall under the, what's the, public service?
No, sir.
So they have nobody to, I know for the power companies to go up, they have to go before the public service and explain why. But look at, look at Bluntstown, Bluntstown, Weewall, they're not that far apart, five hundred dollars for a tap fee, but three thousand dollars just to get watered, that's, that's terrible. That's terrible. What are they running? They must be running their police department and, are they running the city? And then the monthly bill, our average, now I know, my mother, she lives right across from me, her water and garbage, which in the city of Weewall, Hitchcock's tied together, she's not on sewer, they don't have it that far down, and we're off the road a little bit, but it won't run forty dollars a month. It won't run forty dollars a month, her water and garbage bill. And down here, what do you, what's average? Anybody, what do you pay? Hundred, hundred fifty dollars?
Uh, yeah, more than that.
More than that? Gene, maybe we can get some of these people to come up to Calhoun, up on our end. No, I, I was just joking there, but seriously, this is, this church you were talking about, this big Baptist church you belong, you, I would estimate it'd take a hundred thousand dollars just to hook up a moat. That's a lot of money, people. To get something that you gonna reap every month, you gonna get a, a fee for from now on. The same reason I don't understand why they want this other. But anyway, this, I don't know why the people had just, the people hadn't took it upon themselves, say, we gonna, enough's enough. Enough is enough.
Commissioner in hindsight, and I'll tell, I'll tell you.
And I'll give you back, Mr. Chairman.
And I believe he said it right there at that podium, and I'm, I'm gonna say one bad word that's not real bad. He was old man, he could get by with saying it. He said, the county's crazy as hell if they turn over those water systems, 'cause you lose control. They redress for the pub, the reason it's set up where the Public Service Commission does unelected boards and bodies like power companies and private water and sewers is for people to have a re, your county residents don't have a redress for their grievances. They can't vote, they can't, you saw what happened in Highland View, they told those folks to go fly a kite. And, and it's the, that's the same problem. If, I, I don't understand necessarily what the, what the city's issue is, I mean, everybody's trying to get along, but, but the, the thing that I see is this, when paper mills running, city was levying two and a half million dollars in Avalon Tax. They levied a million last year. I would gander to say that vastly, most of their employees are on water and sewer being paid, and that's why they don't have money to, to run the city the way they did when the paper mill was there. And we were tickled when we used to buy water from the city, 'cause it was good water. And again, now, just think, it wasn't that many years ago, we give two thousand gallons, the county had an enterprise fund, we didn't pay anybody but our water person and the water clerk out of that fund. We sold water, two thousand gallons of water now, free, the first two thousand was free for fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents, and part of that was debt service. So just think about the markup, and again, I, I, I do think they're paying most, if not all, of the staff, including part of the commission salaries and whatnot, if you look at their budget, how they break it down, what water and sewer pays for, but their, their cost to run that plant and to buy those filters, I know Commissioner Macron was on the board when they were talking about those hundred thousand dollar filters, it is asinine, even if they quadrupled their customer base, which is not gonna happen in my lifetime or yours, anybody else's, but that plant is built to handle Calhoun, Franklin, and some more, and, and it's not. And I don't know that it will ever be run efficiently. The same with the wastewater plant. Plans fifteen years ago was to go to AWT plant, an efficient plant. They running a modified plant that could produce fifty million gallons of sewage a day, they don't have a million gallons unless it rains. And so it's never gonna be efficient. And that's why if we're ever gonna get control of the cost and the quality, I mean, it'd be okay, I guess, if I was paying a hundred dollars a month for my water and sewer bill if I could drink the water. I buy David and George out every time I go, get, get, I don't do, the only thing I do is bathe and flush the toilet and wash clothes in that water. And, 'cause I'm in an old house, and, and I can tell you, I've already had a hot water heater rust out and flooded my house one time, about six, seven years ago, but everybody that's in an old house, it's got galvanized lines or copper lines on the ground, they gonna have a crisis at some juncture, 'cause it's eating them up. When I go to turn on the water in the morning, it's red for about fifteen seconds every day, and it hadn't changed, and it hadn't changed since it started. And I don't think twelve years is, is, if they can't fix it in twelve years, they're not gonna fix it.
All right, let me go to Mr. Macron real quick.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We won't blame him, 'cause it happened before his time.
Uh, Michael, uh, I say again, let's get in a room with them and hash it out. You can't defend it. I, I mean, I couldn't defend it when I sat on the city board. I mean, the, the tap fees are outrageous, the, you, you know, and I, I heard it and heard it when I sat on the city board, and, and, and I've always been pro-city, you know that, I, I've been here all my life, and I, and I, you know, I, I try to be a, a advocate for the city, but on the water and sewer issue, it's tough, 'cause you can't defend these numbers, you just can't defend it, and, but, but once again, I, I think we need to sit down with them and, you know, and fish or cut bait, you know, it's time, 'cause a young person cannot afford, you know, you know, I know my bill was over two hundred dollars this month, so, so.
And at least you got garbage where yours.
Yeah.
Some of us don't get garbage without.
That's garbage too, now, that's garbage too, but still, it, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. I've got a son that lives in Weewall, and, 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 you know, he pays half of that for everything, you know, and, but, and, and I'll say this, they, they's good people at the city, don't get me wrong, Commissioner Rogers still works for the city, and, but I think we need to sit in, you know, let's sit, sit down with them, and, you know, let's tell them where, where we're at, and, and, 'cause I think it's time. Like you said, the waters, you can't defend it, the water's not good, and, and let's leave it at that, but, you know, I don't wanna beat them up, but let, let's do a workshop and sit down, let's, let's, you know.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna add on to that, just say, like you said, let's, let's, let's sit down, let's, I mean, let's, let's, let's pause on the, on the feasibility, let's get with them, let's see if we can do a workshop, and let's see how we can work together to try to at least, 'cause we, I mean, like I say, we got to figure out something that we can, either, I know we, we need to try to help them get to where we would like to see, you know, we'll help the customer, help the people out, you know what I'm saying, at least get the bill, get their bills down, so I would say, let's, let's sit down, let's have a workshop. You talk to the, you, you, you need to sit down and talk with the city manager before we all get together, and let's work something out, and let's see, can we, let's come up with a plan, a ten-year plan, or some kind of plan to, to do, we got to do better, so. Like I say, well, well, I, I hate to, 'cause I know a lot of those guys, we all know a lot of those guys, and, and we don't wanna seem like we, we, we beating up the city, but we just wanna try to see, can we work together? You know, we got to get some kind of teamwork going here, unity or something, so we can help move this thing forward, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
And Mr. Hammond's memo here, it says feasibility study for water on the north end, so it's, we've got some opportunity on the north end to expand our water system up there and reduce people's firing insurance, and I think it's a great opportunity right now, and that's something I wanna move forward on.
And I don't have a problem with that at all.
But we're talking about ten, twenty, thirty years in the future, and at some point in time, we gotta make some decisions to, to make some progress, and, and that's what I'm here to do.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And, and me and the chairman, we represent some people in the city too, that I think would love for us to sit down, you know, with the city, and see if we can do something better, see if they can do something better. I mean, a lot of the elderly people, they're getting beat up, and, and I think our constituents in, that we represent in the city would love us as, as a board to sit down with the city and say, listen, we've got to, we gotta do something different here, 'cause we're killing our people, you know, so.
I agree. If, if I could suggest that the, that the chairman request to just call the mayor or, or the manager and, and request a, a sit-down meeting, I, I, I do not have much hope in, in, over the past three administrations, and I can tell you, I like just about everybody. I don't, I don't know that I've got an enemy on that board. I really like Rex, known him all my life, I liked Bo before him, I liked Mel before him. Mel was my lawyer for a long time, till he retired and got old. But, but I don't see any desire to change what they're doing, and that's the problem I have. There's no reason they shouldn't take these customers at, at Guff Air. There's no reason they shouldn't have taken that RV park. There's no reason that, that we shouldn't have a common sense talk about, we screwed up, our, our, twenty years ago, we screwed up and got sold a Boondoggle, and built a surface water plant that is not working for, for the citizens of the city of Port Saint Joe, and the customers in Guff County, remember now that there are more water customers in the county than there are in the city. And that's why a lot of people, including me, think that the county residents are subsidizing the city's budget, because that's where the most customers are. And, and again, you've got them from the Cape to Overstreet, and, and it's gonna take, it's gonna take some horrible decisions by their parties, are very hard, when I say hard, I don't necessarily mean horrible, to, to, to make a change, but I don't see that, that surface water plant ever being right. We need to go back with aquifer.
And Michael, if we sit down with them, and they don't wanna change direction, we've done all we can do.
I, I agree. So, so if we could have a motion to, to move forward on feasibility on the north end?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine. No, I'm fine with moving forward with the feasibility study, I mean.
And, and, and request a, a workshop next month with the, with the city commissioner?
So we're gonna do feasibility, move forward the feasibility study slash, go ahead on and request a workshop, can we do it all in one motion? All right, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDane. Any further board discussion? All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Come on up to the, come on up to the, come on up to the podium. Mr. Davis, state your name and your address for the record.
Name Marvin Davis, three twenty-four Avenue B.
Thanks, sir, go ahead.
And the question is, will the public be invited to this workshop? Because I think we need to be.
Yes.
Okay, are you gonna publish the date anytime?
Yes, sir, we will, we'll make sure we get advertised.
Okay.
Okay.
We need to hear that.
Yes, sir. Now, anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
All right, the last of the beating up on the city of Saint Joe on page seven. I, I detest people that say they're smart and either are dumb or they just lie. And the last commission meeting that I watched, which was the one before this, the same one that we had this letter come from, statement was made from the podium and agreed to by the board, at least not objected to by the board, that all of the TDC money was going Just a crock of bull, lie, not even close, people don't have a clue about what they're talking about, and they get up there and talk, and then, and then some of the board members, nobody objected to it, some of the board members agreed with them, we don't spend anything in the city of Weewall. We give them a five, five thousand dollars for fireworks, we give them five thousand dollars for the park, ten thousand dollars for the park, we haven't spent fifty thousand dollars in the last three years in the city of Weewall. The TDC's not set up to bill stuff. The TDC's set up for marketing. And who benefits from the marketing for the TDC? The people that have, and the people that have rental homes. The vast majority of the rental income comes from Cape San Blas, Indian Pass, Saint Joe Beach. The last study that was done was in the ten percent range that came to the city of Port Saint Joe. Forget that they've got two hotels in the city of Port Saint Joe, one that's been down for a year, but about five or six of those big houses at the Cape rent for whatever one of those rooms rent for now. We spend the vast majority of our money on marketing. We spend all of our fourth penny on beach. Beach nourishment, beach cleanup. What some folks on the board, the city board, do not grasp, and they should grasp, is this, they get more than their fair share of money. We're not spending, I mean, we're not doing all these huge projects or whatever, but on the weekends, what parks do we clean in the city? Do you know, Commissioner Rogers? We do Jetty Park when it was open, we do Frank Pate Park, whatnot. I've never heard the city say that, that we pick up garbage or do cleaning and put toilet paper and paper tiles in, in city parks, just like we do in the county parks on the weekend for those items. We cut grass, we do beach maintenance. None of the city of Port Saint Joe has beach, even the Windmark area, the beach is ours. We do all of that maintenance. Hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of garbage pickup and maintenance on those beaches. The, the, the stories that are spun about the Field of Dreams, the fact that the Field of Dreams wasn't even incorporated when it was originally talked about back pre-Windmark annexation, when the county was gonna put up six hundred thousand, the city was gonna put up six hundred thousand, we didn't even have that property. There's not one time that the TDC board voted to do the Field of Dreams. In fact, they had a study that said they didn't wanna do the Field of Dreams, they wanted to go to White City, buy some property and do an eco park and a zipline and a, all this kinda stuff. We had a commissioner that wanted to do Field of Dreams. We had this board that wanted to do something for the children in that park, money that it took five years to accrue, we don't generate in that fifth cent a lot of money every year it has to accrue, but the stories that were told in the, and then this past meeting, I didn't watch the meeting, I just read it in Star, and if you take the quote for what it said, on, on page seven, it says, by this memorandum, I'm requesting that if the city of Port Saint Joe wishes to withdraw from the County Terrace Development Council, that the board allow it with no objection. We can change our ordinance tomorrow, we can advertise, and if they wanna start their own TDC, I think they'll be sorely disappointed with the money that they'll generate, and they will be sorely disappointed with the restrictions that they have on that money. Our TDC has been fantastically successful, and again, you said it, it's for the direct benefit for the people that fill the rooms, but guess where all the businesses are? Port Saint Joe. All the people are eating in the restaurants in Port Saint Joe, they're going to the, to the shops in Port Saint Joe. It's, those people aren't paying bed tax, but it's people that we put heads in beds that come and spend their money in the local community. There was a big push to put the Welcome Center at the Beacon Hill Park, certainly a beautiful place. Our Welcome Center's in the city of Port Saint Joe, all of our traffic goes to the city of Port Saint Joe. So we pay for fireworks twice a year, we do all these other, but it's not just a giveaway where we can give them money and say, all right, we want eight hundred thousand dollars, we demand our fair share. They won't generate eight hundred thousand dollars in ten years. So my, my suggestion is to, to, to let them know that if, if they wanna break off, go, and we'll, we won't object a bit in the world, but they, before they get out on that limb and, and start demanding things, they, they need to get their facts straight. And again, they wouldn't be eligible to levy but three cents, and not even that immediately the way I read the, the law, 'cause they don't have a beach whatnot. We have five cents with overhead and whatnot, we do a heck of a lot, and they get well more than their fair share of TDC money. So they've made the statement, I just ask y'all to say that if, if, if they wanna go, let them go.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hammond, must be just water they drank in, 'cause I don't understand much. Sir, what in the world? When you get free advertising, you go buy advertisement on television, it costs money, but TDC, the, correct me if I'm wrong, probably the majority of the money goes into marketing, But TDC, the, correct me if I'm wrong, probably the majority of the money goes into marketing, a lot of it. And who benefits from it? The Cape, the city of Port St. Joe. Ride down there and look at the tags. I do this. Right, just go down and look at all these tags. There's some Florida tags in there, but there's a lot from all over. But they're getting, you know, free advertisement and everything. I, I don't understand the... Well, I guess I'm not supposed to understand. Anyway, if they want to split, I wish them well. I wish them well. I'm not going to push to shove them out, but if that's how they desire, good luck. Thank you.
Alright, yes, sir. Anyone?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I think when it gets down to it, they'll rethink what they're saying, but uh, have you got that quote Commissioner Ashbrook put in the paper?
I don't have it with me, but there were two or three quotes that checked me in that, in that statement. I, I wonder why we all made a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I know, uh, the chairman and myself, we, when we started that, you know, all, all we were trying to push for was revitalize Tenth Street Park for the kids. That's all it was. And, and we, we never, I, I, I never did. The chairman didn't either, promised them any money above. All that was, was to revitalize Tenth Street Park, and then some people stepped in, you know. The short of it is, we couldn't do anything once the lawsuit was filed, so. Um, but the kids suffer now because the park is still run down, and the reason we were trying to do it originally was to improve the park. That was the whole, the whole deal. I think we were, we were going to add a couple amenities, like a splash pad and one field. And a handful of people basically said, you know, we don't want it. Park been there eighty years, but at no point in time do I recall us ever promising them any money. That money was going strictly for Tenth Street Park. Am I wrong, Mr. Chairman?
That's, that's pretty right. Yep. And I think, um, I think the city listened to those, some of those handful of people that's trying to blow up the, uh, about the TDC, saying that the money ship, the majority of the money going north. And, and I agree. I mean, if, if, because I, I mean, it's always pointing the fingers back at us, you know, like we doing this, we doing this, you know. We owe them so much money. I mean, I, I'm fine with if they want to, if they want to do their own TDC. I mean, that, that way they can write their own checks. They, uh, Ms. Jenkins will collect the money for them. She can send them their check and they can do their own thing. That way, it's, it's off, it's off our chest, to be honest with you, and we ain't got to worry about them running us, you know, throwing our name through the mud in the paper, saying that we, we keeping all the money, you know, and we're not giving them their fair share of dollars. So, I'm fine with they want to, if they want to do their own TDC. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure it'll take a lot off our, our guys' plate, you know, so if they want to move forward with that, I'm okay with it. I have no issue with it.
The TDC does a great job in St. Joe, and, and we're living a different day and time. At one point in time, the city might have could have sold that argument before the storm, but now even worse is, they've got a hotel that's been down for a year. It, it still hasn't come back online. Uh, I know they have a lot of VRBOs in town, but nobody even collects on, you know, and, and to get that money is, is, is a struggle, but I would love to see us, I, I'll say it again, you know. I think they need to come to their senses. I, I don't think they realize just, you know, the amount of money once you get to looking at it, but uh, I think we need to sit down and talk with them, you know, and but if, if they want to go their separate way on the TDC, there's, you know, I'm not going to stop, you know, vote to stop them, so.
Any more board members?
You want to send a letter? Or we want to just let it be said, or how do you want to do it? For this workshop? No, to, to tell them they can do their own, and we won't object if they want to do their own TDC.
Just add it to the list when we sit down, workshop.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Uh, I'm going to skip down that, that first three. I'll try to be quicker on the next ones. I'm going to go ahead and go to Sherri. I want her to give you a proper casualty insurance update, and she's got a couple other things. This number eight on your sheet. Actually, it's no, number eight on my sheet. It's, it's no, it's no number on your sheet. It's uh, third, uh, fifteen, fourteen, and that it. You just start with the update, please. We had a, I, I'll, I'll tune in. I traumatized Commissioner Macron last week because we had to put a stop to all of our projects, one predominantly in his district fire department. We, we were upside down about a million five from, from what the insurance company owes us versus what we contracted to, to fix. The, the, the most egregious example was the Cape Fire Station number two. Uh, insurance gave us twenty-nine thousand dollars to do that project, and the project came in at, right at three hundred thousand dollars. So we were spending ten cents and getting one cent back. We've done that in quite a number of things. EDC's, two hundred thousand upside down. The Weow Health Department, God only knows what it's upside down, but it's at least a quarter of a million upside down. So, every fire department basically had the doors kicked in, blown in. They were giving us twenty thousand dollars to repair the doors, and it's costing eighty. We had a pretty good meeting with them yesterday, uh, but I still don't feel comfortable with releasing those uh, contractors to continue until they agree to get really close on those numbers. Because eighty or ninety percent, you know, we can argue about, we, we can't get from ten percent uh, there. And again, just in the, in the projects we've already completed, the EOC building, the Weow Hamlets Building, most of the fire stations, Fire Station One or Fire Station Two at the, at the Cape. The library was a huge upside down. Uh, we're a million five short. So, I'm going to let Sherri give you a little update, and, and also in this, after the insurance update, I wanted to tell you how much money we are owed by FEMA to date, how much money we have got from FEMA to date, uh, and a couple more things that might tell you about our cash flow.
Um, we have worked on all this. Insurance plays a factor. FEMA plays a factor. Grants play a factor. A lot of different pieces going on and all different timetables. So, we, uh, starting with the insurance, basically, we try to do everything right. We bid out the projects so that we can recapture the most from FEMA as well as insurance. So that delayed the projects upfront. Now, we're underway, and insurance hasn't quite caught up with us. We are working with them. We did have a good meeting. But ultimately, it, um, page sixteen gives you a snapshot of updates on FEMA insurance and beach, beach restoration. So I'm in the middle with the insurance funding status. And there's a lot of details to this, but just in summary, if you were to take all of our, um, insurance settlements, actually cash in the bank that we've received, we're only talking about one point one, but that's all projects. Just our contracts alone on our repair bids are over three point five million dollars. Some of those are underway. Some of those are completed. Some of those are not started yet. So, we have a large funding gap. We're using some of the projects that haven't been started or whatever. They're kind of helping cover some of that gap for now. But we're working with insurance. We're trying to settle up where we can. But basically, that is why projects are kind of, we're at the point where we are, we have a cash flow issue. We have more out there and more contracted than we're getting back. We're working to settle those up. We're hoping that that starts moving a little bit faster. But there's still going to be some delay, and some of, they have to have more information. They have to talk with contractors and go through bid specs and all that information. So we don't really know the timeline. But we are trying to narrow that gap and get as much fun, funding back as we can. The three point five million dollars, um, for the repair contracts that we were talking about, on just those projects alone, we've only received less than three hundred thousand from the insurance company. So, it's a big deal. We're covering some of that gap with the other projects and other insurance funding vehicles, et cetera.
Let, let me add one thing to that again, and we got criticized for being slow, but we tried to do it right. And in order to, our, our hurricane deductibles, and that's something I learned yesterday, it's even worse. In rough terms, and I use rough terms, we've got a million dollars in deductibles before they're going to pay. We've got five million dollars or six million dollars worth of insurance on the courthouse, so you've got to have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in damage before they pay the first penny. And unfortunately, there are thirteen or fourteen buildings on this complex, and every one of them have a different deductible. But let me tell you what we found out yesterday. In addition to the hurricane deductible for the structure, we have to pay the hurricane deductible for the contents. So if we had a million dollars in contents on the courthouse, we've got to pay an extra thirty thousand deductible on top, so that's stacked. So that was part of the deal. So, in order to make sure that we could get all of this money back from FEMA, two or three years down the road, we went through all the hurdles, did all the right things and all the steps and did the advertisements. Our insurance company told us, seven days into the storm roughly, that if we hired one of the contractors on their list, we didn't have to bid. And my argument to them yesterday, which they seemed to take, was one of those particular contractors, I'm not going to name them, that's on their list, bid on every one of our major projects. And we either took them or the low bid on that. So, we either took what they would have let us do without bidding, or we took a lower-priced contractor. So that helped a little bit with our argument, but when she says we're a million one, add a million to that. So that's just trying to tell you where we are, just on the insurance side.
Uh, good news. Uh, I think you said that the insurance agreed to expedite some more money.
They, they agreed to expedite and sent us a million seven. By the next week, by the end of next week, we got a, a commitment. We also got a commitment from them, and we're not positive on the time. They, they have hired a private adjuster for base, but for, I guess that's what we call it. And I can't remain to remember the initials, but it's part of this problem. They came in and did the initial study and, you know, they, they said the roof's ten percent damaged. Well, we replaced the roof because it was a hundred percent damaged and, and wound up, is it? No, that's a different one, I think. But either way, the, the gist of the deal is they promised to sit down with us and our engineer as early as next week, where we can try to get the Cape Fire Station going, the TDC going. I can't remember what the other ones, maybe the Sheriff's Office. I don't know if y'all still got something outstanding in this, in this building going. Because I've had to hold those projects up. Those projects, uh, are over a million dollars, and we're three quarters of a million dollars off on our estimate. So if we can get close, if I can get eighty-five, ninety percent, then I'll be able to let those projects go forward. If not, we're going to, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that later on in the program.
Michael, so everybody else knows, uh, we, we've got very limited money. I think y'all have done a great job of managing the money. I really do, because from FEMA, we've got very little money so far.
Sherri's going to give you that. That's correct. She's going to give you what we, what we're owed and what we've got. And, and that's something that's, that has gotten better in the last couple of weeks, because we, we talked to Secretary Moskowitz, but, but I can tell you, the, uh, if it hadn't been for him, I don't know that we would have gotten what we've got so far.
Um, with that insurance update, that, um, million funding gap does include that payment that we are expecting hopefully next week. So, even with that, that does not clear everything, but we are working to try to get those taken care of as quickly as possible. For FEMA, now I, just direct expenditures, these are actual invoices that come in that we paid that got applied directly to FEMA, didn't get covered by a department or anything else, and we're still going to seek FEMA reimbursement. Just direct invoices are estimated at one point six million dollars. That is money paid out as of yesterday. We have received a whopping four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars from FEMA, and we are fourteen months post-storm. Rachel and I, Michael, Warren, everybody, we're bugging, we're begging, we're pleading, um, but it's an extremely slow process. Even funding that has been obligated at the federal level, we are still not receiving at the state level. And eighty-four percent of that hundred and sixteen thousand, we've received since November twelfth. So it's only been in the last couple of weeks, and we haven't even received all that's obligated yet. There, there, our reimbursement requests far exceed that, because that is only, again, direct invoice cost. So that's not equipment hours. That's not other items that need to be reimbursed. Our reimbursement requests far exceed that. But that's actual cash out that we are cash flowing, that we are in need of funding. So one point two million, easy sitting, that we need FEMA reimbursement on. We're on top of it. We're doing everything we can. We're providing everything they ask. We're going to the state level, and it's a very real funding gap that we are having a cash flow. And that is strictly FEMA funding. That is not other grants that, you know, we are working on or are part of our regular operations that we have to cash flow. Um, beach restoration project, we are pretty much done. They are closing out. We are expecting those final invoices, um, any day now. And so far, FDOT has reimbursed us their two hundred thousand that they agreed to fund for sand, so, um, we greatly appreciate that. Restore Act has funded just over two point three. They have reimbursed of those upfront costs. The Restore Act funding is pretty timely. We're able to draw that funding down as soon as those checks are being cashed, so that has been helpful. We have requested the three million dollar advance from FDEP about had a heart attack last week because I was told prematurely that they would not advance it. Lots of phone calls and emails later. Our advance is being processed, and hopefully we will have it in less than two weeks. The timing of that will line up with how we are able to pay those vendors, because most of that funding is for the state park. That grant was not intended to put the county, um, in a hardship. So I have stressed that to them, and they are trying to expedite that payment. The rest of it, the rest of it, um, will be funded as reimbursement. Those will be DEP grants, Restore Act grants, and then also local funding that we are paying for with our bonds that are funded by MSTU and TDC. So, the rest of the payments will not come as quickly, um, probably a good thirty days on those. But, uh, we are working through that, and hopefully that will be closed out, um, at least in the majority, uh, by the end of December.
So if you wonder why I called you last week and told you I had a bleeding ulcer, that was probably why. We're in great fiscal shape, but we cannot float ten million dollars worth of, of, uh, shortfalls between insurance and DEP for beach sand, and we're not talking about road paving.
Oh, yeah, that's all on top of this.
So, uh, again, that, that's why I had to, to suspend those projects. I appreciate the commissioners working with me on that, but, uh, I'm going to let them go just as quick as, as we can, but, uh, again, that, when I saw that deficit and what the projected deficit was on top of that, when you take out the million seven and the projected deficit, just on the insurance claims, it was close to four million. So, that's why we had to pull the plug, so. It's more rosy today than it was last Monday.
Sounds better, yeah.
You can go ahead and hand your other two, if you will.
Do you have any questions on any of that? Uh, my other items are, back to page fifteen. Uh, the first is, the first is a budget resolution. This is in addition to the ones that you had in your consent agenda. This was a last-minute, um, old-year payment that didn't get accounted for. So this is a resolution, whereas Board of County Commissioners has unanticipated revenues in the disaster fund. This will be FEMA reimbursement, um, request. These revenues are necessary for these approved expenditures for the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year. So that is just, it's an increase to revenue that's anticipated for FEMA reimbursement and the increase to the expenditures for emergency management professional services. And that net increase is, uh, thirty-two, seven oh five.
You need a motion?
I do, and, um, Leanna will have that resolution for you to sign at the end of the meeting.
I entertain, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this resolution? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passed, it's five and oh.
The next is on page fifteen. This is Budget Amendment twenty-two. This is for, uh, it's just- This is for, it's just, I have a typo, this is for the general fund. This is just a line item adjustment for the tax collector, their transfer out versus other services. It was just a direct cost, it lowers their transfer for a bill paid directly for their IT, Microsoft services. It says to amend the eighteen nineteen budget for general fund for line item adjustments within the funding allocations. This amendment is being requested allocate funds for approved expenditures, but does not change the overall budget.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, your motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this resolution? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
I'm doing the next one. And then page seventeen. This is a DEP monitoring grant for the nineteen twenty state fiscal year. This is grant number twenty G one. This is for the annual monitoring that will be required post-beach re-nourishment project. This is a thirty-eight percent cost share with the state funding a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Just request for the chairman to sign and accept this grant agreement with the state.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
She's doing the C Oats.
If we can, just let Casey come on up, we've got one more in the Grants Department. This is a grant, I can't remember, I talked to Commissioner Macron about this, to do sea oats planting on the new berms.
It should be a paper that I just sat by, so. It may look like this.
It'll look like that. Here, here, look at her, Jim.
We got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just requesting to apply for the NOAA Habitat Restoration Grant. It's through their community-based restoration program, and I'm asking for the chairman to sign the application once it's been reviewed. This is for the sea oats, and the match for that will be from the completed construction berms, and the amount that we're going to request is between two and three hundred thousand.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this, applying for this grant? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
And Warren and Casey can correct me if I'm wrong, the berm project we just completed at Cape San Blas does not include sea oats, which this would be. But the emergency berms that we're gonna talk about in a few minutes does include both that and sand fencing. Okay, so this would be specifically at Cape San Blas, and it would be on the, what I would consider the bigger berm area, that would, you know, allow the folks to participate, like we did ten or eleven, twelve years ago.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You can, if you can, if the chairman's good.
I'm working with Eastern on the mill site. The existing ballards at the mill site are beyond their useful life, and would need to be replaced, so Eastern can tie up their ships properly. Before, what number?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. So before you, as a proposal from Dewberry, to work with a geotech firm called NOAA to collect the required data, to get more information in regards to the mooring ballards. All of this would be paid out of the JPA for the Eastern site. So I'm just requesting your approval for that.
All right. All right, board members.
So moved.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, on that also, we've requested a meeting with Eastern. I know that they were planning on trying to be here by the end of the year to start outfitting the Staten Island ferries. As you probably saw, they just launched the first Staten Island ferry, so we've requested a meeting to talk to them about what the timing of that, and it was talking about up to sixty to seventy jobs in that process, so we're wanting to know what the timing of that is for the public to know when those jobs will be here.
All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public?
And we finally got the building up, good news.
All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
The best-laid plans, Kerry did a good packet, and I left something out, and I don't have it with me, so I might need Clay to correct me. We need to go out, we went out for bid initially when we did the first hundred thousand of sand procurement from our pit. We need to go out for RFQs again for the procurement of up to three hundred fifty thousand cubic yards of sand for the emergency berm project. And I think we're gonna take those bids to January the third at four o'clock, and then we'll open them at a meeting that the chairman would call sometime in early January.
I even motion to go out for RFQ on this?
Please.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
At our December ninth special meeting at three o'clock, I think it was in the consent, we hope to do the first phase of that, go out for bid, get permission to go out for bid on the first phase of that, which would be the St. Joe Beach End Windmark to the Bay County Line. That'll be the closest to the source, and it will be the easiest one because of access. The Cape's gonna be the hardest because of access and having to double and triple haul, but that would be the one that would have the least amount of sand and to be the fastest. But we hope to do that and take the bid sometime at the end of January is our plan, and that's what Dewberry's working on at the present time. I'm gonna skip eight, I think Joe's gonna bring that up. Next thing I have is on page ten and eleven. Requesting a one-year extension to the Ashbrit contract, based on the memo before you. And I need, in the motion, if you will, to state exception four one and four seven. This is the same contractor we've had for a dozen years. We are, we thought we would know this week, we have not been notified so far on our federal grant that we're gonna get matched by DEM for five million for cleanup of the ditches and whatnot, so, and these individuals would be doing that work.
Okay. You're extending them for one year?
Yes, sir.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Novak.
Commissioner Jev, do you have a question? Commissioner Macron?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. The first one I had was with regards to alleyway abandonment. You'll see number ten on the list from Mr. Hammond. In that list, we had a request, and I know I've been working with the commissioner, on McKinnon Drive, between Madison and Iola, there's an alleyway. Under our current policy that you adopted in two thousand fifteen, the policy requires that the public come and petition this commission for an abandonment of an alleyway, and then you deem it, it's not necessary for public safety or health and emergency vehicle responses, which historically is what your alleyways served purposes for, for fire and rescue. That particular alleyway has been discussed, I believe, with the commission, with the commissioner, and I'd asked for permission to move forward with the abandonment of that alleyway. Under your policy, it requires the public to post a certain advertisement posted on the property, notify the adjacent property owners, have a public hearing, and go through the public notice in the paper process. We'll follow all those steps. The only alternative, and you've done this several times in the last four years since you adopted the policy, is that you will start, initiate the process yourself, I will work with the public works staff, and we'll notice the property, and then in January, we'll have a public hearing on that potential abandonment. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, I'd ask for authority to move forward and start that process on behalf of the county commission.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for, I'm Mr. Novak. Any question? All right, I entertain a motion there.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Macron. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Page twelve in the packet from Mr. Hammond also had a letter drafted. Each of the commissioners had received a request from Dr. Dusty May on behalf of the Bay Savers between last meeting and today, and he had reached out in asking for a letter of support from the commission in support of the Bay Savers' efforts with regards to the St. Joseph Bay, Apalachicola Bay, and Lake Wimico, and enhancing and protecting the aquatic environment for each of those bodies of water. He had submitted a proposed letter of support, and I had read that and discussed it individually with you commissioners, and answered any questions you have. I've gone ahead after my discussion with Dr. May and put together a proposed letter of support for the Bay Savers. It's in your packet, I'd be happy to read it if you wish for me to do so, otherwise, it's offered for your consideration.
All right, you guys need Mr. Novak to read that letter? I had a chance to look at it. You ready? We're good.
Okay, if there's a consideration amongst the commission, Mr. Chairman.
Those are the wishes of the board. Should all go at once?
All right, I'll do it. Make the motion.
Okay, I'll motion to move forward with it.
I support the letter.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public on the letter of support for Bay Savers? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time.
All right, thank you, sir, Mr. Jager.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir.
The first thing I want to mention, and Kelly's got the two trophies on her table, and I know she was gonna mention them, but first I want to say, I know there's been a lot of discussions on the TDC, but I've been really proud of Kelly and her staff. They have really taken the challenge, not only before the storm, but after the storm. I want to mention specifically that they do everything in-house, probably one of the few TDCs that do that. Most of them have folks that they pay as consultants to do a lot of their marketing, everything, all marketing, everything with Google. Everything goes through Kelly and her staff. They have trained themselves, they have worked together, and everything goes through their staff, and I'm really proud of the work they've done. They were recognized last week, I believe it was, for a couple of awards, I wanted to mention those awards. One of them was in the special event category for hosting a concert, the Brothers Osborne Concert, and so that was, that's a statewide award, and it's not just a third place or fourth place, it's a first-place award for that project and going forward and promoting that Brothers Osborne Concert. They were recognized for that, and they were also first place in the rural marketing category. Of all the rural TDCs, your TDC staff was recognized statewide, and I'm really proud of them, I'm proud of what they do, and I'm proud that they don't use consultants, they actually do everything in-house for themselves. It was mentioned about the fifth penny and other things, I want you to know that on the fifth penny, they have staffed up. I know twenty years ago, when I was sitting on this board, it was difficult to keep the restrooms clean. I can tell you that I check them on a regular basis, because that's a pet peeve of mine, but I can tell you that every restroom I go to, whether it's White City, or whether it's Cape San Blas, or where it's Weewahitka, that staff takes care of that. So most of the monies that the TDC collects goes to marketing and those kinds of things to bring people down and put heads in beds, but on top of that, and the use of that fifth penny, they have staffed up to where they can take care of everything, all the parks and everything they have. I can't say enough about how proud I am of Kelly and her staff, and I wanted to mention that. Kelly, you may want to add something too on that, because I didn't want to take all the time.
So much we appreciate all of your support, Warren. Good morning. As you can see, I brought two guests today. They both happen to be named Henry, which is the top award, and I'm gonna vanna white them because I'm so super proud of our entire team, and like Warren said, we attended the Visit Florida Tourism last week, the forum, and they had the Flagler Awards. The Flagler Awards are the top awards in the Florida tourism industry. So for us to be able to bring two Henrys home for our county, especially in a year that we've had, we are just so proud. They are judged by industry professionals from all over, and we're against the entire state in this competition, so it was very nice to be recognized. And I want to say again, we do that without the help of an agency, so we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're being able to put back into the right marketing. Your staff is passionate and very good at what they do in marketing, but they live here, and we love the area. So I think that comes across in the messaging that we put out, and I think that's why it's been such a success. So I also want to say thank you to all of you for all of your support, for appointing a good counsel, and Commissioner McDaniel, thank you for serving on it. We appreciate your guidance and kind of letting us run with our ideas, so thank you very much, and most importantly, thank you for always letting tourism have a seat at the table and being champions and helping us work through those issues so that it can stay part of our economic impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kelly. I want to say one other thing there. When that storm happened and we saw the destruction, we probably went way too conservative, but we were conservative in the numbers. We thought we lost fifty percent of what we would generate. We immediately cut the budget by fifty percent, so she was, her and her staff were handcuffed a little bit this past year with that. Wound up, we weren't down but nineteen percent, less than twenty percent, and a lot of that is for the efforts of Kelly and her staff, so we appreciate her with that. Over and beyond that, I just need a couple of items that I'll need your approval on. As you know, we went out for bids for some of the things at the country club. Approval to negotiate with West Gapes for green rehabilitation, they were one of the responders to that, and they're gonna be in town next week. We have talked to all of the responders, and this is the one that we've deemed most appropriate for our course, and so I'll need approval for us to negotiate with them, for the attorney to draft the contract, and for the chairman to sign that once we've got all those details complete.
All right, thank you, sir. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Any greens? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Secondly, as you know, we went out, we don't have what we call a green superintendent at the present time at this course, we're working on that, we're gonna try to find the appropriate person. We've reached out to a number of different folks in the golf industry. We think we're gonna get that taken care of, however, for a brief time, we're gonna need some consultant with a specialist to make sure that we, as we're going through this process, we're doing the right things to make sure we're protecting that investment. It's gonna be basically a small consulting fee, but it's gonna be well worth it. I'll need your permission to also get the attorney to write that contract and get the chairman to sign that also. Premier.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Any further board discussion? Just one quick thing, Mr. Jager, how we doing? Just one quick thing, Mr. Yager, how we doing out there?
We're doing very well. I'm really proud of the staff out there and everybody that's pitched in for that, Mark and his staff that's helped us. It's coming right along. We're probably still right at the break-even point, so I'm ecstatic about that. We're able to hold the money back that you've appropriated for the first year to make sure that we have all the monies available for these greens that we're going to have to rehab because it's a fairly expensive endeavor, but it's doing really well.
And Grill 19 up is pretty good, too.
Grill 19's a pretty good hamburger.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
And the last thing I have, the third bid that you, we put out was for equipment purchase. We've got two different firms, and I would like approval once Jordan completes his full review of that. I think he knows what he wants in the company, and it may be a mixture of the two companies, but he's still going through the warranties. If y'all will allow Jordan and I and Jeremy to work that contract, it will be between the two that put in for that, I think it was Toro and it was John Deere. Those are the only two, and we'll probably wind up getting some of the equipment from one and some of them from the other, but we'll, we'll need approval to go ahead and do that, make that decision.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Okay, that's all I had for the time. Thank you, Mr. Macron.
What about, what about the chemical? Yeah, at the present time, there's, we're still reviewing the chemicals. That's, that was the last one. I don't need any chemicals for the next couple of months, so we're still reviewing that. Thank you.
Ms. Summers.
Yes, sir, I have one thing today. We opened bids yesterday for bid number 1920-04 bunker gear for all the fire departments throughout the whole county, and their recommendation was to award to the only bid we had, Sunbelt Fire, and it's, each item is broke down. The bunker coat was $979. The pants with the suspenders is $759. Boots, $414, and the helmets, $295.
A recommendation to go with, to move forward with that?
Sunbelt Fire, yes, sir.
Okay, Sunbelt. All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the, you got, I'm sorry, okay. Mr. Rogers got something?
No. So nobody else wanted to bid?
That's the only bid that, that they received, and it actually, David Richardson and Bobby Player were here for the bid. I mean, they're actually the ones that prepared everything, and he said that these actually came in cheaper than what they were anticipating, and they thought it was going to be a lot more, but that would, that's for each, you know, and anybody, they're going to contact all the fire chiefs to see who and what, and he said that with Sunbelt, they will come in and
Size.
And do all the sizing. Everything will be, you know, to fit.
I'm tired of wearing extra-large boots. I got small feet. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, any other board members, any questions? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. That's all you got, Ms. Summers?
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Hammond, on page, we skipped somewhere on page nine in your packet, you coming back to that?
I am, I
Okay, all right.
Assume now that Jim and
Okay, all right, okay. All right, we just, we just wanted to make sure. All right, Mr. Collinsworth?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Harrow, anything else? Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got a couple of updates and then a follow-up on something we talked about before. The warden had been before you on multiple occasions about the bridge there right before the prison, and took a little bit of time, but we have that resurfaced now, went up there and checked on it, and it's a lot better than what it was. Damage from the debris trucks going in and out of the lay-down yard right next to the prison. That's been repaired. The patch over the Road 5 Bridge has been repaired. There's still an existing issue on Diana that we're probably a couple of weeks out from this morning talking to them, but they're going to take where you get to the intersection of Stone Mill Creek and Diana, take a left and go toward Stone Mill Creek Bridge there. They're going to resurface that area with a little bit wider shoulder for turning rates, so that's still yet to come. There hasn't been a lot of movement on 382 waiting on court permits, so Industrial Road is still in construction. The place right before on C-30 on the state road, it's not a county project, but it's a state project, but I keep up with it because we have a lot of people that travel. On the side of the little bridge right before you get to C-30, that still has not been repaired, but again, this morning, they said probably a couple of weeks out on that deal. So a lot of things still coming, some things completed. We had a chip fire at the landfill this past weekend that spontaneously burst it on fire and had one wall of it. We've got that taken care of. Wasn't really an issue except for the smoke, but that's probably something we'll have to contend with for years to come, it sounds like. The, one additional thing, we were talking with the city earlier. I had brought it to you a couple of months ago, maybe two, three months ago, about where the city has infrastructure under our paved roads in the unincorporated part of the county. They cut the road, and then it's not patched back, you know, to any kind of a standard. If you drive through Oak Grove, you'd see exactly what I'm talking about. So Clay and I have went and looked at it and measured them and identified multiple road patches in the unincorporated part of the county where their infrastructure is under our road. And it sounds like as of this morning that we identified 12 in Oak Grove, and the city has somewhat agreed to fix 10. I don't know exactly which 10 they are from my sheet to their sheet, but there was five that we had found out on C-30 where it didn't actually get in the road from the white line to the yellow line, but it was from the white line to the shoulder where they'd actually cut in, and those have not been addressed. From what I understand, they're not going to fix those, and then four of them that we identified at Gulf Air, two of those they agreed to fix. So we still don't have a solid understanding of, don't cut our road, and if you do cut our road, it needs to be fixed back to the standard that it was. So that may be an additional item that you need to add when we talk to the workshop, that we can get the bare bones of what's going on with our roads.
That's fine.
Road pavement's expensive, and it's aggravating for people that live in the community where the road's cut up and chopped up. I mean, I feel sorry for people that live on Long Avenue, I've tried on that every day, but Oak Grove is no different, and that's one of our roads. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Gee, add that to the list.
We need to add it to the list, and I think some of it is explainable and some of it's It was extremely poor design, it's still done all over the country, but to run the sewer down the middle of the road is stupid as can be, in my opinion, but that was done in the '40s and the '50s and the '60s. But the difference is, the county does not have any in the county, other than, I can think of one or two private subdivisions that has that situation. So our water line is on the left side of the road or the right side of the road, and whichever way the water line is, the sewer line's opposite. Unless it is a main cutting across the intersection, there is absolutely no excuse to ever cut our road. We don't have to dig up the road to find something. And in the specific instance, on the brand-new paved road that had been paved for a week that was cut, it was a service line. And, and that's, one, it's extremely cheap now to bore, but the other is, we did $20,000 worth of damage to a road that will always be damaged for something we could have bored for a couple hundred dollars. But it ain't their road, and it is our problem. And, and our problem is this, I understand if you're on Long Avenue or Garrison Avenue, which was paved and two days later they tore up that. If you got to get in the middle of the road to get to the sewer, I understand that. I don't like it, but I understand it. But there's no excuse to cut these roads in the county unless it's a main that needs to be cut off or whatnot. It's not, not for a service line. And, and I think there's just some, some sense that it just doesn't matter. And again, even though we want it patched and we want it patched properly, it's always going to be a patch, and we don't want to waste 100 grand on a new road in Gulf Air that would be good for 30 years and then have it cut the next day. So again, that's something that we definitely need to add to the list, and that's something that we, I can never agree to that. And whether it's the gas company, which we don't have a problem with, or the telephone company, or any of these other folks, if it's not something that's a crisis that's got to be done, don't cut our road. Period.
When we have that meeting, I want you to give them a proper protocol, a list, black and white, follow.
Well, we can tell them, and y'all make the law, but then we have to enforce it.
Michael, something, I think the rest of Garrison's going to be paved this year, this coming year, so we need to make sure.
Well, again, I don't have any business telling the city what to do with their road or whatnot, but you live on that road, right off that road, and, and they need to get their crap straight before they pave it.
That's it.
And if that means redoing all the services before you do it, they need to do that. I mean, and again, be proactive, or otherwise you're going to be hump to hump to hump right after the bat, and it, you know, we're not going to get, we're not going to continue to get money to pave roads and then cut them a week later. But yes, I would encourage, especially the commissioners that live in the city, to encourage them to do that proactively, again, because at a minimum, on all the vacant lots, go ahead and run your service where you don't have to dig up the road, tap that line. But in the county, 99% of the time, there's no excuse for cutting the road. Other than convenience, or laziness, or both.
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And I agree with what Mr. Hammond's saying. Go ahead and cut 98 in two without authorization. Cut 71 in two without authorization. Maybe they need the sheriff needs to go find out who's doing this, but it'll eat your blony sandwich, you know, that you issue every day over in the jail, and might get their attention, to don't cut our road. If you have to, get with our public works man, go out, and if it's justifiable, then it's justified. But just to cut a road because, well, I don't know what the reason is, that's unexcusable. You just can't have that. And you're right. Paving new street, fix it up for the neighborhood in there, and two weeks later, they cut across and go throw a whibbly oil shell in it, call it repaired. It's no good. No good. You're back.
All right, yes, sir. All right, you done? All right, Ms. Horton? Nothing? Okay. All right. Ms. Gottlieb, you going to come back?
I'm good.
You good? Mr. Whitfield? All right, for, so Ms. Lynn, you going for Mr. Joe Paul, right? Mr. Paul said he wasn't going to talk unless we had to ask him some questions. It's going to be hard to believe.
So you doing all the talking today, Lynn?
Before you, you have the updated HHRP listing. I gave each of you a listing for the districts in which, all five districts, in case you get phone calls that are not in your district, so you have all of the districts and where we are with them. What you'll notice from these lists is, just looking at District 1, for instance, the items in green, the names in green are the ones that are currently approved for funding that we have available right now. The funding that we've already received is $3,367,000. The yellow under the number sign means that those personnel have been contacted and notified. The column to the right, items to, need to complete, I have included that as a notes column, and so you have whether they have been notified, the date they were notified for their 30-day notice, and any other pertinent information that we're waiting on. The items in red are those that have, that are not approved. The items in blue are the applicants that are approved with the remaining funding that we should receive between now and May, and that amount is $2,293,200. So we should receive that hopefully before the end of the year, but we're not sure, we've not been notified yet of when we'll see that money. There are a few items, a few names in yellow. Those are constituents and applicants that are not currently qualified, however, have indicated to us that they wish to become qualified and they are eligible if they meet that qualification. So they have 30 days in which to meet that qualification, or we will move on. The item, the applicants in white are those that we do not anticipate now, unless other funded applications fall off after 30 days. We do not anticipate being able to fund those in white with this funding. So far to date, we have received in District 1, 38 applications, of which we anticipate being able to fund 23 of those. 29 in District 2, we anticipate funding 26 of those. District 3, 10 applications have been received. We should be able to fund nine of those. District 4, 39 applications, of which 26 should be funded. And District 5, 16 applications, and we should be able to fund 14 of those. According to the funding amounts of all of the money, we have $1,800,000 for very low, $2,075,000 for low, and $1,450,000 for moderate income. And those amounts for each district amount to $360,000 for very low. That's 30.4%. For low, $415,000, which is 35.1%, and $290,000 or 24.5% of moderate. Of these applications that we have received, in District 1, very low and extremely low, we have four rehabs and 10 mobile home requests. District 2, seven rehabs and six mobile home requests. None in District 3. District 4, nine rehab requests and one mobile home request, and none in District 5. In the low-income category, we have, in District 1, three rehabs and nine purchase assistants. District 2, two rehabs and nine purchase assistants. District 3, no rehabs and four purchase assistants. District 4, seven rehabs and 13 purchase assistants. And in District 5, one rehab and seven purchase assistance requests. In the moderate and workforce housing, we have, excuse me, purchase assistance requests in District 1 of 12, District 2, five, District 3, six, District 4, nine, and District 5, eight, of which we can, for each district, we can only do five purchase assistants total in the moderate income level, so. I gave you, the first page of this is a breakdown of the cost to date, and it gives you those percentages I just mentioned and the amount of funding we need. We are short in two income levels, the very low and extremely low. We are 13.18% short, and in the low-income category, we are 5.15% short in those categories in order to meet Florida housing standards and the requirements of this program, and we don't have enough applications to meet those.
So, question?
Yes, sir.
Can we take more applications to try to boost this up?
That, that is a board decision.
Yeah. But I just asked a question.
And, and again, we've kicked it around. I would recommend we do it in three, for certain, and possibly in five, but not in the others. One, two, and four have more than we need on the application side. We were, we're underserved in three and five, and, and if we could limit it to the ones, there's no need in getting more applications when we can't fill them in those particular districts. But if we wanted to do three or three and five for the, for the very low, is that what we were talking about? That may help a little bit. We had good participation, but we didn't have real good participation in those particular districts. We had a lot more moderates than requested, but if we wanted to do a two- or three-week opening for that specific area and try to be specific in that, and we'll try to get some flyers on the doors or whatnot. some flyers on the doors or whatnot, we're talking about the Highland View, White City, Oak Grove, Jones Homestead, Howard Creek.
In the very low.
In the very low.
Yeah. I'm fine. You good with that, Jim?
Yes, yes.
And we have had further phone calls and several in those districts where people had not heard of the application period, so we do have people that have wished to apply for those.
We need a motion on that? So we're just gonna rehabitate us for...
And give us some direction, I mean, it's gonna be holidays and whatnot, if we wanna take them to the first week of January, maybe? Is that timely enough?
We would definitely need at least till the first week of January, yes.
Let's just say that Friday, the same time, Friday at four, well, y'all are taking them though, let's do Thursday at four, or five o'clock, five o'clock's fine, if that's good with the board.
What's that date?
Oh, six to second, is that correct?
Okay, the second of January, so that'll give just a little over a month, giving some time for the holidays and whatnot.
Okay.
And that's very low in just districts three and five.
We are about five percent short in lows as well. We are five percent short.
And that's gonna be three and five as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's good or bad, we got a little bit, a little bit of money. So if we get a hundred applications in the low, that's gonna make a lot of folks upset, but we need very low.
Let me ask you this, Michael.
My guess is we could do more very low and do them together.
We could, yes.
Yeah, so let's just do the very low, if that's good with y'all, and if we have more of those.
Yeah.
And then if we don't get them then, then y'all need to re-distribute the money, because I know Districts One, Two, and Four need more, so.
Especially for, and we have the applications available, so the applicants are there.
I was just thinking too, if we needed more moderate and they needed more low at some point, you know, we could...
Be thinking about it.
Yeah.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Come on up to the podium and state your name. Once again, Mr. Davis, your address, for the record.
Again, Marvin Davis, three twenty-four, Avenue B. I'm just concerned with the low and the very low, I think it should be open up to all the districts, if they got individually in those districts that for some reason did not get the notification, did not have the opportunity to apply. I'm talking about the low and the very low. So instead of saying, you know, I think you just only mentioned two districts that can...
The reason why, because that, each district was allocated a million dollars, and so we pretty much met our million dollars in our district. They are falling short, they don't have enough people to buy four million dollars for...
From District Four, right?
They've reached the maximum on that amount, on that money.
They're already reaching the max.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But the plan is...
But I still say, yes, I'm advocating for District Four, but I'm also across the county also.
Right, right. The plan is, if they cannot meet theirs, then they'll reallocate the money to District Four, One.
If we don't get enough applicants in, say, District Five, that money be reapportioned to somewhere else.
Okay, so if you wanna come up, you know, is not utilized, then District Four from District Two or any other district.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, I can live with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else in the public?
And Mr. Chairman, if I can just help quantify, we have applications in those other districts that can qualify for additional assistance if we reallocate the funds, so it's not an option to really need other applications because we have them on file already.
Okay, good deal. Anyone else in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh. Ms. Lanier, why I got you here, I know we discussed this earlier, but I wanna see if I can get you and Mr. Paul to probably attend the city meeting, and because a lot of this funding that we got from HHRP, to just say somebody does qualify for the purchase assistance, and I know that we discussed about the water and sewer tap, is it possible that you guys can go to the city? Because I hate for somebody to qualify for sixty thousand, then ten thousand of those dollars, you know, gonna go on water and sewer tap. Is it possible, we can go to...
We were gonna request that from the board, if you would allow us to do that. That is particularly important for both cities, for us to see if we could get a waiver, especially on the one-bedroom, one-bath mobile homes, because we only have forty thousand dollars, and the mobile home is thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty. We don't have money to pay to retap or reconnect or anything for those particular units, and some people are purchasing land and don't have taps, and it will take up ten to twenty percent or more of their funding, and they won't be able to build a home and purchase land and do that, so with the board's permission, we would like to go to both cities and ask if we could get a waiver or a reduction of those fees.
That'd be great, because I think that'd help those people out a lot, especially one, you know, that has to get a water and sewer tap. If we can save money, more money to help them on purchasing their home, that would be great. So we need to make a motion on that. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. Thank you, ma'am.
Just for everyone's information, we did have in the consent agenda this morning the RFQ for additional contractors. We've had several contractors, not in county, but out of county contractors that have requested to put in their RFQs, and we're gonna need those additional contractors with the work that's going on in the county in order to get these bids done and get these rehabs done quickly. So I appreciate the board voting for that this morning. Well, the other thing would be the mobile homes.
Page nine, yeah. It's been page nine, and you're back.
No, this ain't page nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Dave.
Okay.
This is just to allow me to go on my purchases of the homes that we bid, when they qualify, when they tell me they qualify, I can sign, and they're not yet.
Okay.
For your information on that summary sheet, the very first line under the ELVL gives per district the number of mobile homes that we are ready to order. So right now, we have seven mobile homes that we have applicants that are qualified and ready to move forward, and with your permission to let Mr. Hammond sign on those, they've already been bid, we used the low bidder, we would get those ordered as soon as we talk to the mobile home company and get an ETA on those and try to get those in quickly.
Okay. All right, what's the wishes of the board? We need to make a motion on that? Allow Mr. Hammond to go ahead and sign?
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this, moving forward, the purchase of these mobile homes? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I can, we still have HHRP and Lynn and Joe. In my discussions with each of your commissioners individually, as we approach HHRP, you've each addressed, and we've talked about the packet that you have in front of you, and I know there's been some discussion, some of the smaller rural counties, on the HHRP program. I've had an opportunity to talk to each of you and answer your questions. As you move forward on the program, I don't know if you have a workshop coming up, I think one or two commissioners mentioned that you might wanna workshop it again. As the program moves forward, and some of the small rural counties, they're looking at an opportunity to have independent consulting work with the counties on these multimillion-dollar state funding programs. As you move forward into the holidays, and if it's your direction, that you want me and to work with the staff to work with Joe and Lynn, to find out what support in terms of financial compliance and auditing, just what we do with all of our federal grant programs or any of our state programs, where we have this amount of money coming in, that I'd be happy to sit down and work on that for the commission, and work with Lynn and Joe, to find out where they possibly could use that type of help. I know that they've done a tremendous job with the program. I know they've managed over a hundred and seventy applications, I think, and it's no small task. Some other communities have, or counties have, more staff, it's just the two of them doing it all. But if it is the direction of the board today, or at the special meeting you have in December, that we can sit down and work on any of that type of assistance or support, then this is a multi-year program, I'll take that direction from the commission and I'll work on something with them that we can get out there, kind of narrowing down the scope of what they could use help with, and how we could fit and tail that into a cost-effective approach for consulting or compliance. I know there's only a certain amount of finite admin money that can be used, so it's a fixed budget, if you will, but if the commission gives us that direction, I'd be happy to take that and run with it.
All right, thanks, sir. Yes, I mean, I have no problem with you sitting down and working with them, trying to figure out whatever they might need, and if we come to some kind of resolution, if they need some help in a certain area, then do the best we can to get a consultant or whoever. But like I say, I know, I couldn't have did it, not a hundred and seventy, not just two people, I can just, I know I would need, me and probably ten more people, but if they need, I mean, if they need a little help, then let's do what we gotta do to help them out. Anybody else? Good?
And the main thing is, and I've talked to them about this, and I haven't talked to them about it in the last couple of weeks, but they got a full-time job with veteran service and ship in addition to this, so we just need to figure out what the hard part that they can't or don't want to handle. The board has told me no staff additions, so we're gonna have to contract with whatever we're gonna add on, and again, I mean, I've talked a little bit with Lynn about it, these houses are gonna have to be inspected, they're gonna have to be, the building department's gonna have to be involved, they're gonna have to come up with the scope of work, they're gonna have to bid each one of these rehab projects. The easiest part will be the trailer deal, because it's, you know, we're gonna order the trailer, and when we get it set up and everybody's happy, we're gonna be through, but the rehabs and then the long-term purchase assistance is gonna be going forward, so whatever we wanna do, I'm gonna listen to them as what their workload and detail goes, but yes, I think we need, if we're not gonna be able to hire staff, and again, it's a two- or three-year process, so I mean, we'd be in a situation where we'd have to lay somebody off, because we can't afford to carry them if we hired them, so I understand that position, but yes, I think we can have something to you by the January meeting, or maybe this special meeting in January, if we work toward that.
That's fine.
That's good?
Yeah, fine, fine.
Okay.
All right, where we at in this? All right, Ms. Roberts.
Counsel later.
Okay, all right. Ms. Rondell?
I don't know so much this time.
All right, Mr. Jim McKnight?
I think that page nine is my portion of that, when he gives you his report.
I got him, okay, I got him. Well, Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir.
You know, a year ago, this county commission meeting, the one before Thanksgiving, we did a couple of important things, you sworn some county commissioners, that was a good thing, I think. The other thing is you approved that contract with the debris removal thing, which I think was probably the best thing this county's ever done, because it's kept us from being in the, looking for money from FEMA to pay us back for ten years, so congratulations on that. Just updating, you know, and things have gotten better. I mean, we, sixty percent, we, forty percent of our businesses on this day last year were closed, and ninety-six percent of them are now open, so we, and we continue, our unemployment rate continues to trend down, it's now down to three point four percent this month, so we're getting to where we wanna get, so things are going well, and just, again, at the time of Thanksgiving, I give thanks for being a part of the team. I just liked being in Gulf County, and I appreciate being a part of this team. Let's, a couple of things, updating you, our project vertical, we remain in competition for that, they've had a couple of questions back and forth, but I don't see a decision being made now that the holidays are here, but that's an exciting project that remains in play. Updating you on Skyborne, he's moving forward with a, building his hangar, he's kind of taking a look at a couple of different ways of doing that, I just saw another drawing on a forty-one thousand square foot hangar to be built out there at the airport. Toward that end, we are trying to assist him, I've been in contact with the Economic Development Administration on two separate grants, one would fund the roadway into his project, the other would expand our industrial development building, and we won't, because he's gonna, the contract he has, he's gonna be building bigger airships, and the fabrication area in our building up there's not big enough. They've been very receptive of that, the problem with those grants is they're eighty-twenty grants, and so we're trying to look and see if we can, under the disaster money, we might be able to get an exemption to the twenty percent match, or find a different way to get the match from a different organization. So we're working on those projects, he's moving forward, I'm not gonna get excited until he files the building permit and it's issued, but I mean, we're, that project's moving forward, so the other project that's updating you, bringing you back up to date, we have a request for you. The biofuel plant is really active again, that project we talked about, it went astray when the technology partners decided they wanted to build their plant somewhere else in, and remember, that was a plant that we really, there really wasn't one in our country we could go look at. The partners in the project, though, changed over time, and we picked up the infrastructure, I was referring to this way, infrastructure, investor firm, engineering firm, who is the largest in the country, that became a partner of that project, and they continued to look at other ways of using the bio, or using our timber to create fuels with, and they have identified a process, and they are very much involved, and again, the big investor firm, remember, they're the ones that have the four hundred, five hundred million to put in the project, and that's what they envision doing. To make that happen, though, we have to have a feasibility study done. Well, feasibility study's five hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, but we did locate a USDA grant that would, that we could get the four hundred, we could get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but then we need the match as part of that, we, to get that USDA money, we would have to put in fifty thousand dollars to do the feasibility study. Again, the partners involved, the people that, with the experts in this, are the engineer investment firm, they believe we have a really good project there, and they believe this is very feasible, but, you know, again, we have to do the study to satisfy the match requirement of USDA, but also to satisfy the investor people that would be brought in to provide the money. So that would be, that would be my request, that would be, it would be two, the one that we filed the application, well, and we'd be willing to put the match up should it be awarded, and then the second request will be that, should we get it done quick enough that you would allow the chairman to proceed with the, with signing that, if we get the application done between now and the next board meeting? So the first would be, the first request would be to you is to authorize us to apply for the USDA grant for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the county matching the fifty. Oh, and the last thing I left out, if the project is funded, the fifty thousand dollars is reimbursed to the county. So that would be it. That's the first request.
Okay.
Page nine is my memo, this has probably been my favorite project all along, this is a, this is a project that would be three times the value, the taxable value on the tax roll of the paper mill, if that just puts something into perspective, gets the railroad running, total jobs are over seven hundred, some of those are incidental because of the wood product stuff, a four hundred and fifty million dollar investment. It's a, it's a grand deal, and I support the board getting on the hook for the match on this project. This would be on the LMP site, we would, we would do a, if this comes to fruition, a public-private partnership with San Joe Company, and that's where it would be located, just here, both of the courthouse.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'm five for the four fifty.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought, Mr. McKnight, I thought you had another second request, don't we got...
I'm sorry, it was to, it was to apply and for the chairman to sign, I believe.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, the second motion would be that, we feel like we can get this application together pretty quick, wanna move the timeline along, and so we would ask that you authorize the chairman to sign once the, once the application developed and Michael's had a chance to review it.
Okay, I entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on that? Anyone in the public on that? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh. Thank you, sir.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ray, you still back there? Come on up, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I just have one update this morning, and it's a sad one, we're losing Melanie Taylor, our four-H... our 4H and Family and Consumer Science agent to Bay County, darn it. But we'll be, we've already posted the job, and we'll be, the deadline for that is December the 6th, and we're gonna try to interview like, probably mid-June or early. But we want to wish Melanie all the best. She had 11 years here and did a great job with 4H and FCS program, so we just want to wish her all the best. I hate to see her go. Well, maybe one other update, too, about the $380 million block grant that's coming down through USDA. That's probably gonna be more active in January. I hope to be able to give you guys more of an update. Then, that's a block grant that's gonna help our timber producers in the county. As you probably have heard, I think we were at like, maybe a $9 million loss of timber in the county, and that's not even counting Deseret. But this block grant should help a lot of our landowners. The application process will go through Florida Department of Ag, but I'm sure extension is gonna have a role in educating the landowners on whether or not they qualify and what they can do to qualify.
And we had a little bit of discussion about that when we went to DC a couple, I guess a couple of weeks ago. We were under the impression that it was gonna be, flow through Ag, but the DEM was going to, Department of Emergency Management was gonna actually run the program because they were qualified, so that may still be up there, but it would be a good positive for farmers and big landholders, and possibly for us to get some of these trees cut that are dead, especially on the keep and around where the saltwater tree was. Can you give just a quick update? You may not have one on the building. I know we were in a little flux, but...
Yes, I can give you an update on that, too. We did apply for the Agrocomplex Grant through FDAX, and we were declined on the grant because of match being an issue, documentation for the match, and as well as the stipulation in the grant saying that we had to have 25,000 people that would visit the county, visit the county office in a year, you know, and I made the comment, we actually had a meeting, all the county extension directors and the district, along with our district director, had a meeting with FDAX last month, and that was one of the points that was stressed, because, I mean, how are we gonna get 25,000 people to our office when on a good day, we probably have 14,000 people that live in the county? So there are some ways around that, as far as like documentation. I think we could probably utilize some TDC money, TDC documentation, I'm sorry, to be able to say how many people are actually in the county. There's a little leeway there, how many people visit the county in a year. There's some documentation we can do there as far as the grant goes. But we were declined on the grant. I think probably our best, there is another route, is that we can bypass the grant and go through legislative initiative for a new building, and maybe that's something we could entertain maybe in the spring. That way, we wouldn't have to worry about the match issue. That would be good. But none of the, none of the counties last year in the state, extension offices that applied for the grant, and I think there were like, maybe, I might be wrong, but I want to say there was like 15 or 16 of them, none of them were awarded last year. We've had, general revenue's been down, as you know, for the last couple of years statewide, and those grants have not been funded, and it's looking like that's gonna be a similar issue this year. We weren't the only county in the district that, I think there were six of us that applied this year, and there were two of us that were declined immediately, and it was because of the match issue. So it's kind of tough to get funding through that grant system. So I'm thinking about maybe we should go a different avenue.
And unfortunately, we use the same template that they had used prior, that was fine. We've got a different director, I guess, and that's what some of this might be, so we may need to sit down with Representative Schoeff and Senator Mumford and see if we can go a different avenue. But the whole point of us having to have property appraised and doing all kinds of things that haven't been required in the past for the match, because you were putting up the property for the match, it seems a little ludicrous, and for the number of individuals that they were gonna require to go through these programs for a small county, you could take everybody twice, and we wouldn't get enough folks to visit the deal. So that seems like something that's just too big of a hurdle for, for not only Gulf, but Calhoun, Liberty, Franklin, Mokala, all these other counties around us.
We modeled our grant proposal after Gaston County's proposal, which was awarded about four years ago. Nothing's been changed as far as the instructions on the grant proposal or anything like that. So we felt like we had a really good chance, because hey, we've got a winner here, and we just modeled ours after that one, and it was still declined, and so.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff? Good, all right, moving on down. Board business.
I'll take it, Mr. Chairman.
Ah, yes, sir, you got it.
Good morning to everyone. It's that time of year again. The board, the five of us, select a chair and a vice chair for the calendar year, beginning January 1 for 2020. And amazing how fast a year goes by. And at this time, I would like to make a motion that we, that Commissioner Quinn remain his chair. And that Commissioner Macron serve as vice chair for the calendar year 2020. Now, this is just between the five of us, the audience has no input into this, so that's my motion. Mr. Chairman, would you, first of all, would you consider?
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
You've done a marvelous, marvelous job, I would commend you highly.
I appreciate it, thanks, sir, thank you for considering me.
Macron?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Macron.
Thank you so much. All right, that's it.
Okay, all right, I got a, thank you, sir, I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
All right, I got a second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, now, Mr. Nova, make sure I'm doing this right.
Yes, sir, Chairman Quinn, you are, you've set a board policy about three or four years ago, this commission, and in that policy, you set how you're gonna establish your chair and your vice chair each year. So as you approach the end of each of your county years, this follows the election that we have each year, as we will again next year. So you set it up for the end of November, early December each year. It is appropriate, and if there's no other discussion, you can entertain the motion, sir.
So, so we're allowed to vote?
Yes, sir, absolutely, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh. Like I said, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the board for having confidence and, excuse me, faith in me. I really appreciate it, and I try to represent us the best in my ability, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Macron does the same. I appreciate you guys for the consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I don't have any other business before the board.
All right, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Rich?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Macron?
I'd just like to say, congratulations to the TDC again. Kelly, you and Christie, y'all done a great job. We made some hard decisions a few years ago, and I think, I think it's paid off. I tell you, we brought her in the house, and y'all done a fantastic job. That's all I have.
That's all, all right. And the, Chair, only thing I have is just a couple, just one thing. Like I say, we, last year was a rough time, you know, we got through it, you know, with the help of everybody in the community, and our county staff, I mean, everybody, man, we just, people just came together, and I just want to just echo the appreciation I have for everybody that came to our aid, that contributed. But I do, I know we didn't have a chance last year, but I want, I want to ask the board if they will consider, let's do something for our county employees and the board's employees, because I think they deserve it, they deserve it. Like I say, I want to do, I know we didn't have a chance to do a Christmas party for them last year, but if y'all guys don't mind, let's have something for them this year, a little small Christmas party, and let's show them my appreciation and how much we really appreciate, appreciate them. So if you guys are okay with that, I entertain a motion that we...
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, gladly.
I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, second by Commissioner Macron, and we'll come up with us dates, early December. Well, we got a special meeting on the 9th, so I mean, we consider, let's consider the 9th then, I'm working, all right, so we'll, December 9th. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh. That was all I had. All right, moving on down to item six. Item six, opening bid number 1920-02, Veterans Park at Beacon Hill.
Yes, Chairman, this is bid 1920-02 for the Veterans Park at Beacon Hill. We had three bidders. First bidder is Williamson Row Company.
Williamson Row Company, total base bid, $199,000.
Second bid, North Florida Construction.
North Florida Construction, Inc., total base bid, $122,199.
Third and final bid, Marshall Brothers Construction.
Marshall Brothers Construction, base bid, $252,200.
Mr. Chairman, if we could table these till the December 9th meeting, this is gonna be reviewed by the park committee. This is also gonna be paid for by, you know, funds that they raised from the park committee, so we could just table these.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we...
So move, table.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this table and these bids? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, back to you, Mr. Hammond, administration update and report.
Two quick things, and let me finish this text real quick. Mr. Butler was wanting these bids. We have a longtime employee retiring today. I don't know how many years Larry's got, 41. Today's his last working day, he's not officially retiring today, but I think he's gonna be on leave until the end of the year. If y'all have an opportunity to run by Public Works at lunchtime, or to give him a call and thank him for his 41 years of service, that's a long time to work for the county. And I can tell you, Larry is the best operator I ever remember us having, and we've had some good ones over the years. He is going to be extremely difficult for Mark to replace. So y'all know the quality that he's been doing. I remember when he ran a Badger, I didn't know what a Badger was, but he is, he is extremely talented, and we wish him the best on his retirement. Last thing I have, give a kudos to Representative Schoeff's office. They filed every one of our requests. Some of his staff worked us pretty hard on getting some language. They also filed the two road name changes. The chairman and I went round and round with them, trying to get the exact locations, but for the Willis Rowan and the John C. Gainis on Highway 98, they got those filed. They also filed the $100,000 request for the Veterans Park and the storm cleanup. We had, again, a hiccup with that, but a lot of effort, and our lobbyists, our lobbyists are working on that, Gray Robinson. So that's all I have with you.
All right, thank you, sir. Am I missing anything? All right, public comment?
I have nothing, sir.
None? Anybody in the public want to come for the board before we get out this morning? All right, if not, I want to take this time and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Go enjoy your families, love on them, be thankful, and everybody have a blessed rest of the week. I entertain a motion, we adjourn. Motion by Commissioner...